Good evening, everybody. I have 7:30. I'd like to bring this meeting into order. I would ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, you can call the role members, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Ballantyne?
Here.
Ms. Gregg?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Grappar?
Here.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Here.
Mr. Soto?
Here.
President Reichenbach?
Here.
Peril of the Minutes for the April 9th, 2019 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grappar?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
Move on to Prophemations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition. We have April Neighbor of the Month. Mayor?
I am really pleased to announce our April Neighbor of the Month is Marlisa Yoder Bontrager. Come on up, Marlisa. Give her a round of applause. Hey. So, I have had the good fortune of getting to know Marlisa. She's hosted events in her beautiful backyard. She was nominated because she does these amazing window boxes every year of flowers. This is what was submitted. The flowers flowing from the window boxes are awe-inspiring. People stop to admire and to tell you what a visual treat they are each year. You've also taken the initiative to set up a little free library in front of your house that's used by young and old alike. And you also have the less-than-glamorous job of taking care of two corner trash cans that are provided by the city, and you do this weekly. And that you are cleaning the sidewalks, and these are just a few of the ways that Marlisa, you have been a great neighbor and have a heartfelt belief in the community, and that is being acknowledged tonight in a small way. So, we have this little gift certificate, this little certificate of Neighbor of the Month for you, and then our Neighbor of the Month receives $50 of Lancaster downtown dollars, and these dollars are donated by the Commons Company this month. So, those are for you, too, and thank you for all that you do, and you can say if you have a few words.
Well, I'm just very happy to be part of this community. We've been around for about 25 years, and we just keep being more and more pleased at the growth and development and the sense of neighborhood that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Move on to our first public comment. Period reserved for citizens who've contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting to request the opportunity to address City Council. I'd ask that you limit the duration of your comments to three minutes. Mr. Harris, do we have anybody called ahead this evening?
Actually, we do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports requested by council. We have the Office of Public Art annual report this evening. Hello?
Hi.
How are you? Doesn't have to be this quiet. Feel like you're under pressure so much to get them to get in the token.
Get the court and the residents.
Take your time.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Hi, everybody. Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Hi, City Council. I'm Joanna Davis. I am the Public Art Manager for the city, and you can call me Jo. And I am trying to get my presentation up here. It's coming. Let's see. See if we can figure this out. Oh, that's the wrong. That's the wrong. You don't want to see my notes. What's that? Who's Patrick Hopkins?
Keep it on the stand.
All right. Hi, everybody. Ready now. So, I'm really happy to have the opportunity to share with City Council and everybody here, and I was hoping Facebook Live, but we'll see if that happens, to share with you the work of Lancaster Public Art. I'm going to start with just a few points about public art in general, and then give you some information about our program, and explain our work over the past year since I talked to you last April, and also talk about what's ahead. So, a question I get a lot is, what is public art? Maybe the person asking is familiar with murals or sculpture, but what about the other things that are not so well-defined? So, public art can be a lot of things, but not all art is public art. The two fundamental requirements are that it's created by an artist and that it's in the public, that it's accessible to absolutely everyone. You go see it, you stumble across it, there are usually no doors to go through, and there's usually no tickets that you have to buy to experience it. The only thing you need to know, if you see something, to know if you're looking at it, public art, are these two things. If it's created by an artist and it's accessible. In Lancaster Public Art, we go a little bit further. We think there are three things that are critical to a successful work of public art, and we think it should also be representative of the community. So, to quote Americans for the Arts, "Public art can take a wide range of forms, sizes, and scales. It can be temporary or permanent. Public art can include murals, sculptures, memorials, integrated architectural or landscape architectural work, community art, digital new media, and even performances and festivals." So, a ton of stuff. And here's a little bit of some, there's a little something about why it's important. So, I hope you guys liked that little interlude, musical interlude. Okay, now, who here can identify which of these things are public art? I'm just, yeah, I'm just kidding. That's random images. So, there's blah-bross up there. So, now, a little bit about our program. Lancaster Public Art is made up of the Office of Public Art, which is me, a board of seven wonderful people, and a host of volunteers that we call public art advocates. We believe that art is essential to a healthy community and that everyone from every background and neighborhood should have access to art. We're focused on empowering communities to make public art by providing resources that can help guide projects, by working within the government to create policies that make it easier to install projects on public property, by advocating for public art to funders, developers, citizens, and other community stakeholders, by partnering with leading local arts organizations to create programming that's collaborative and can have collective impact. So, that's what we're all about. And I also want to tell you about what we've been up to. We've gained an audience through our Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube accounts, and now have, as of Friday, 2,048 followers. So, maybe we can bring it up to 2,050 tonight. What do you think? 51? Thank you. We've been busy. We completed four major projects this past year. Around 42 residents or community stakeholders contacted the Public Art Office directly, seeking to increase public art projects in the city. We had seven exhibitions, two in the train station. The display cases there now, maybe you guys have seen them, we've transformed them into a space for sculpture. So, a mini-public exhibition space right there, and it's given new life to the train station. In addition to those exhibitions, we've had, we've hosted six shows in the City Hall Gallery, including the annual Black History Month celebration, too. We were awarded three grants. We had a bunch of outreach events this past year, including city celebrations, street festivals, block parties, and workshops with PCAD and F&amp;M student volunteers. We also had some long-term projects that we're working on that are still underway. We've been working on the renovation of Colleton Park. This project, as I'm sure you guys know, it combines an artist named Matthew Geller with landscape architects, RGS, to redesign this critical public space in the southwest community. And we've been working collectively with the Zoe Community Group, as well as other neighborhoods and neighbors in the park, to ensure that it's a community-driven project. Another ongoing project we've been working on is the redevelopment of the remainder of what was called Lancaster Square. So, the development of this plaza is a key point in our 10-year plan for public art, and we work to make the new plaza a place of welcome and community. And it's really going to be awesome. I'm super excited about it. It's going to be a place for a lot of opportunities for public art. Currently, there's an RFP that was released by our Public Art Advisory Board for the naming of the square. So, we're looking forward to working with City Council to determine appropriate and inspiring name for the plaza. Working closely with the West Lancaster Jewels, including artist Justin Jones, we're piloting our first temporary street mural project on the intersection of Crystal and First Streets. Since last fall, the planning team, some folks from the West Lancaster Jewels Neighborhood Group, and a board member, and myself have been getting together to plan the intersection, and then they've been reporting to the entire neighborhood group of the West Lancaster Jewels. And in June, Justin Jones will be leading a community paint-in party for the installation of the street mural at the West Lancaster Jewels Block Party. So, while we work through this pilot project at Crystal and First, we're developing a process for community organizations and other neighborhood groups to work with artists to create their own artful intersections. In addition to a permitting process, we'll make some sort of toolkit of sorts. The vision is multiple accessible, community-led projects with less bureaucratic involvement. Based on programs like this across the country, we believe it'll lead to more opportunities and more art in our neighborhoods. Last summer, we worked with neighbors and artists to lead community projects that we've been calling PACE. Josh Grappar was selected by neighbors of the southeast Lancaster, of southeast Lancaster, to work on arts-based community development projects. At workshops in the summer, he began developing community mind map. He was asking residents to contribute to it and envision the future of their community through drawing and writing. And in the fall, he roamed the streets with our public art cart and set up at community events. She turned it into sort of a printmaking station. Selena Almanzar created projects in Colleton Park to start conversation about the upcoming renovation with her neighbors, with the neighbors there. Her work culminated in a temporary mural on the wall of Water Street Mission that faces the park. And she's just started work again in the park, and will be setting up art-making stations now through July, making, sort of turning the chain link fence there into a community exhibition of sorts. Here's a short video that explains PACE just a little bit further.
I think PACE has surprised me on every level because I didn't know what to expect.
Artists are resources that every community has. How do we, how do we really utilize that?
PACE stands for Public Art Community Engagement. It's a new program that was created by Public Art, and the idea-
Is to pair artists with their neighbors in order to learn more about neighborhood life there, so that we can learn from it, so that we can better inform our projects and our planning processes from the knowledge that we get from there, and so that the artist can inform his or her own work through these conversations as well.
This is the first time that I've been given the opportunity to really use my artistic skills in conjunction with organizing practices or with community building.
It is partially data gathering, but it's also this really exciting radical way of actually talking to neighbors and having fun while talking to them, and making art while talking to them, and then finding out what they want and how they want to do it, in terms of what public art might look like in their neighborhoods.
Across the board, we've gotten incredible information, whether it's food sovereignty, murals, sculptures, community policing, open public spaces.
Folks are excited that we're asking them what they want. I think that's really new, especially for an arts organization. And we're also not limiting the conversation to like literally what kind of painting or mural or sculpture you want to see, but like, period. What do you, what do you imagine your community to look like in the future?
I think at the core of PACE is trying to get people to retake claim in their neighborhood in a public way. In my mind, it's a big call to bring people out of their homes, into the community, and meet other folks who are dreaming the same things that they are.
The goal is to really have meaningful works of public art installed in neighborhoods that come from those communities directly. And part of that goal is understanding that the process is just as important as the product, as the end result. So, all of this work the artist is doing in the community is considered public art as well, and is just as important because there's value in all of it. This next slide, it looks like the picture seems to be floating off of the screen, so I just want you to know that's, I don't know what's happening there. But currently, we're seeking funding to sustain and continue PACE and provide more impact. We're partnering with the Phillips Museum at F&amp;M to build a cohort of local artists and provide them with the tools and support they need to create artist-led community projects in their own neighborhoods. We'll also invite community organizations and CBOs to be part of it in the training, so that they can, they can learn and utilize artists in their own outreach efforts. So, if we get the funding, the money would include an additional staff member to manage the cohort programming and the community projects. So, yes, wish us luck on that one. We're excited to continue to position ourselves as a dependable resource for the community, because there's no need for us to be the one, one of the only organizations initiating public art projects. We're learning from our own projects to create tools, like our policy for temporary public art called TAP, for community stakeholders who want to do similar work. And by walking alongside community-initiated projects, we can offer the needed city support while expanding the quantity and quality, the quantity and variety of quality public artworks throughout the city. So, through a grant with Lancaster County Community Foundation, the Public Art Advisory Board and I have been working with consultants to strengthen the structure, our structure and vision. Through board meetings and a retreat, we've also been looking systematically into the future of Lancaster Public Art. And as called for in our 10-year plan, we're working towards the development of funding streams that can support additional staff, because the reality is that the Office of Public Art is a teeny bureau within the city, and there's only so much one staff member can do. Overall, we're building partnerships so that we can form a solid foundation for the program, and so that these projects and initiatives that we've started can flourish. And we're really excited about what's ahead. So, I hope, I hope you guys are, too. We're always looking for more partners, so if you know anybody that wants to get involved, send them my way. This is my information. Anybody is interested in public art, please contact me, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah.
For presentation. Do council members have any questions or comments?
Council President, if you may.
Yeah, sure.
Just, I've had the opportunity of working with Jo and the rest of the Public Art Board. It's, the reverb is kind of freaking me out. Sorry. To work with Jo and the rest of the Public Art Board for the year and a half now that I've been on council, and it's been an absolute treat. And in fact, at times, and maybe the best thing about it, is it's been contentious. Like, the group has been really willing to dig into the work of what access and equity in public art means for, for all corners of the city, and sometimes that means there are opposing views, and things get heated. But I think that's the way that, that the best projects come about. So, I just want to specifically commend you, Jo, and the rest of the Public Art family. I see some of you hanging out in the back. Hi, guys.
What's up, Pat?
For that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dizzy.
Yeah.
There have been some mellow meetings, too.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Just to put it in context, there've been some mellow ones. I just want to thank you as well, and, you know, seeing all the public art popping up around the city is really amazing, and the growth that's happened, and it certainly, it adds to the vibrancy of the community. The one in particular, you showed a picture of it, but the one behind the rescue mission caught my eye every time I was down in that neighborhood. It was amazing. It was really, really cool, and to have that huge kind of blank canvas that's been there a long time, and to put those faces in the windows was a really, really creative idea. And I heard a lot of people talking about that one. So, it's just an example of something I could never possibly think of, because I don't have artistic qualities, and thank goodness, there are people who are. So, thank you for the work. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Anybody? No? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Very much appreciated. We will move on to interim reports of committees of council. I don't believe we have any this evening.
Actually, Mr. President, I have some-
Oh, we do? Okay, great. Councilwoman Ballantyne?
Thank you. As you're aware, the city self-insured for workers' compensation costs. Every year, funds to pay workers' compensation claims are included in the individual department budgets, but those claims are paid from the administrative services budget. So, each quarter, we shift money from the departments where those injured workers have made claims to the administrative services budget to cover the costs. For the first quarter of the year, workers' comp claims were made by police patrolmen, police sergeants, firefighters, and stormwater management workers. A total of $67,656.35 is being moved from those department budgets to administrative services. Because this money is being moved between departments, this requires City Council approval. So, I make a motion to approve the first quarter workers' compensation transfers totaling $67,656.35 as proposed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grappar?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll move into our legislative agenda. Before we get to any items, I want to pass to Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to add to the agenda, Resolution 1990.
So, we have a motion, Council Resolution Number 1919.
Second.
Motion and a second, and this is simply added to this evening's agenda. Council comments from the public? We will talk more about it when it comes up on the agenda. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. We're going to do that resolution now?
We'll just wait for it in order.
Okay.
We just have to vote to get it on the agenda.
Moving into the Heritage District, considering the following application and recommendation from the Historical-
Mr. Harris, sorry to interrupt before we move on. We just have to vote to add that on to the agenda.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Not a problem. Just want to make sure it's on there.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grappar?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
And then we'll address that after we get through with Resolution Number 18. Moving on to the Heritage District. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Considering the following application and recommendation from the Historical Commission-
Mr. Harris, sorry to interrupt before we move on. We just have to vote to add that on to the agenda.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Not a problem. Just want to make sure it's on there.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grappar?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
And then we'll address that after we get through with Resolution Number 18. Moving on to the Heritage District. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Considering the following application and recommendation from the Historical Commission for improvements to a property within the Heritage Conservation District, and, sorry, we have one tonight. City of Lancaster, owner of Colleton Park, 238 Water Street, I'm sorry, South Water Street proposes construction of a new storage building in the park along South Water Street, and this application was recommended for approval by the Historical Commission. Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Council comments from the public? Mr. Brown?
Terry Brown, 238 West Chestnut Street. About the Sir Colleton Park, right? This last year, nobody voted on you. There was no vote at all, period. Then, as soon as she came in on January 3rd, I went down there, the park was there. Now, I thought the voter voter on it to change the name. The name wasn't changed. See, you just made it to that name, Colleton Park, because the Bush Club is not there no more on Water Street. It's right back on Darrell Street. The Bush Club was their backup to get the name changed.
So, don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Brown, but are you speaking about the construction of the storage facility, because that's what this is-
No, I'm calling about the name, Colleton Park.
We can, if you want to reach out to us.
Going for Colleton Park. It wasn't Darrell Park.
I understand.
But for Colleton Park. Colleton Park was not voted yet.
I understand, Mr. Brown. What I'm asking is, that's what we're talking about on the agenda right now.
Yeah.
So, if you want to reach out to us.
Colleton Park 238.
Correct. We're talking about the building. Do you have any comments about the building that's being placed in Colleton Park?
With the building, with the pictures, right? Now, with all the pictures. See, I wouldn't have done it about the pictures, right? I wouldn't, no, but I didn't do it. I just sat there and looked at it down. It's good to do it, right, but I didn't say no.
I think you're mistaking. The building that's on Water Street is not the one they're discussing. It's a building that they're going to put in Colleton. So, you're getting it confused.
Yeah, but see, that's what I'm saying. I ain't getting no say, well, you tried to put in a building, right? I don't mind you putting a building, but first, I want to know, I want, you got to approve it to have the name changed, to do anything.
And we can certainly have that conversation, if you'd like.
That's what I said. Well, see, I've been having single meeting, and there was no such thing. It came up, the name change. It's always been on hold, on hold, on hold, and all of a sudden, the name was just changed by itself. Now, I know who changed it, because you wasn't the president at the time then.
All right. Well, we can have that conversation. I appreciate it, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Sure. Any other comments?
Just to clarify, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's just, it's like for lawn maintenance equipment. Suzanne was kind enough to go forward over the documentation, but it is, it's incredibly straightforward. It's hedge clippers, lawn mowers, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grappar?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
Move on for ordinances for final passage. Administration Bill Number 4, 2019.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, amending and modifying the code of the City of Lancaster, Chapter 240, Restaurants, Section 240-1, Definitions, to add a definition of hazard, and Section 240-4, Inspections, changing the frequency of inspections, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Gregg?
Amending the Chapter 240, Sections 1 and 4 of the Restaurant Inspections Code, Section 1 will now have a definition for the word hazard, a biological, chemical, or physical property that may cause an unacceptable consumer health risk. And in Section 4, frequency of the inspections amended from every six months to every 12 months, the health officer will prioritize and conduct more frequent inspections based on the assessment of the restaurant's history of the compliance with this code. The intent of this amendment is to make the city code consistent with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Other council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Gregg?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grappar?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Reichenbach?
Aye.
Move on to resolutions. Council Resolution Number 18, 2019.
The resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, accepting and adopting the Lancaster Act of Transportation Plan, affirming the importance of active transportation and the importance of the plan as a guiding document.
Motion to approve. Second. Have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Grappar?
Thank you, Mr. President. On April 1st committee meetings-
On April 1st committee meetings, council received the summary of the Active Transportation Plan. The entire plan is available to the public on the Lancaster County Planning Website. As a condition to receive grant funding, council needs to accept the Active Transportation Plan. That's what this resolution does. The adoption of this plan is not a blanket approval for the recommendations in the plan. Those recommendations will be brought up before various boards like the Traffic Commission and others. So I just wanted to make that clear before we started. And I can open it up to any city staff who wants to expand on the Transportation Plan Ordinance here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have other council comments? I just want to thank all those who took part in putting this plan together. It was a lot of time, a lot of time, a lot of back and forth, collaboration with county officials and many, many others. And want to reiterate Councilwoman Grupar's point that this is not a blanket approval of every stipulation in this plan. This is simply moving the ball forward so that we can possibly receive grant funding and continue our conversations. I'm fully expecting neighborhood meetings, the full extent of which will lead the changes that we're looking to see in our neighborhoods. So if you have comments, I would just ask that you remind yourself of that fact that we will not be deciding tonight on any specifics, on any specifics of what bike lane looks what or where or how. This is simply a macro level approval of the plan that we can possibly get grant funding started. So if we don't have any other council comments, I will go to the public. And if there are public comments on it, please feel free to come up. Yes, sir. Good evening. Hi. If you could just share your name and your street.
Yeah, my name is Rich Low, and I've worked downtown for the last 35 years. And I know this is not an approval of everything that's in the plan, but I do want to address one particular part of the plan, and that is the single lane Chestnut Street, which I think is a significantly bad idea. And I think it's a bad idea for the following reasons. First of all, I think it's dangerous. I think it's dangerous for cyclists and motorists because you're going to have cyclists coming from behind parked cars into intersections that are not controlled by stoplights. There are four streets, Shippen, no, Elm, Pine, Concord, and Water, where that will occur, where cars will be coming from the north and going across the street. And I think bicycles are very, very hard to see as it is. Conspicuity is a real problem for bicycle riders. This is going to make it much, much worse. The same is true on the west side of Chestnut Street. Shippen, Anne, Marshall, and Reservoir are all intersections which are not controlled by stoplights, and therefore, you're going to have the same situation. You have motorists crossing, bikes behind cars, cars, vans, SUVs, and they will suddenly appear in the intersection. That's number one. Number two is it'll be a traffic nightmare for cars on Chestnut Street. I drive Chestnut Street home each night, and from 5:00 to about quarter to 6:00, it is very, very busy, two lanes full. And I cannot imagine what it's going to be like when it's one lane. In addition, when you only have one lane, you have to deal with delivery trucks where it stops, trash trucks in the morning, paratransit, like Red Rose Act said, all those folks stop in the middle of the block or in the middle of the street, and traffic again will be a nightmare. And so I would just urge council to consider, when this comes up again, a balance between the global goal of increasing the bike friendliness of the city and the burden it will put on motorists and traffic going through the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any other public comments evening? Yes, sir.
Evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Arthur Morris, 434 West Chestnut Street. We meet again. I will not take a lot of your time because you gave me a fair amount of time a few weeks ago. I just want to mention, if I could, a couple of things. One is, I appreciate the fact that you're not approving something specific. There is something specific, however, in the plan. It's much more detailed on Chestnut Street than just about any other place. The city has not yet completed a traffic analysis on intersections as to how this, that kind of proposal will impact traffic. And lastly, when you refer to this will go to other bodies, the key one is the Traffic Commission, and that is not controlled by the citizens as most groups are. There's seven members, the mayor, Public Works Director, the city planner, and the Chief of Police. There's a council member, I think it's Councilman Soto, and there's two citizens. So it's controlled basically by the administration. It's not to say that it's already predetermined, but if the mayor has a position, normally, city employees would be likely to support that. This is a change. About 10 years ago, it used to be that all Traffic Commission items came before council, and council had a chance to reverse them, particularly on major traffic matters. This no longer is the case. Council voted to change their procedure so that Traffic Commission makes determinations on items such as this, and I think that's unfortunate for the reasons I mentioned. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. You have any other comments? Sir?
Hello, I'm David Di Savino, 441 West Chestnut. The previous two speakers hit most of the points that I would do, and I don't apply a lot. But we live on the west side, on Chestnut Street, and were able in 2017, when this first arose, to do a petition, which amounted to a survey of residents on Chestnut Street and the immediately adjacent streets. We talked to over 200 people. Eighty-six percent of that polling was strongly opposed to reducing Chestnut Street to one lane. And as the council goes forward and these plans are put into effect, I hope that they take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the information. Mr. McGrane, I think I saw you walking up, so I don't want to have you waiting back there forever.
Hi, my name's John McGrane. I live at 636 West Chestnut Street. I'm thrilled that you're considering this plan. I think, I live a few blocks further out than the Di Savinos, and where we are, Chestnut Street's pretty different. I mean, you know, we're two blocks away from the portion where it goes from one lane, Marietta Avenue coming into town, to two lanes, and we get to see the 45 mile an hour traffic all day long, people jockeying for position, getting to pass the person that was driving them crazy all the way into town on Marietta Avenue. So I think this is great. I don't understand why we would invite people to drive faster as they enter the city than they were driving before they got to our city. But I also know that that's not really the point. I think, what I would say is, I think that we, as I've talked to neighbors, you know, what I've heard is that people like a lot of parts of this. I mean, I think a lot of people are grateful for the opportunity to improve bike safety, pedestrian safety. We have a huge problem with speeding in our city, and if this provides solutions to that, I think that would be a huge asset to our city. You know, and, you know, you just have to look at some of the things that have happened lately. A few weeks ago, there was a bad accident at Chestnut and Mary Streets. Just this past weekend, you know, there was an accident at Williams Pathicary. If anybody's driven by that and seen what happened to the side of that building, I mean, you know, you can only imagine how fast cars were going and what would have happened if a pedestrian was in the mix there. Last year, right about this time, classmates of my daughter, she's a senior at McCaskey, one was killed, one terribly injured in an accident on East King Street as a result of speeding. And so I think there, we need to do something. And maybe this, maybe the details need to be sorted out, but to say that we, you know, can't, that we don't do anything doesn't seem acceptable to me. And, you know, and I know that there are nuances, but, you know, I also think, you know, we're not inventing these things, these, you know, protected bike lanes and other features like this, they've been done in other places. I mean, you know, we're not inventing this from scratch. So let's learn from those communities, figure out how they've addressed things like emergency vehicles, like deliveries, like, you know, like challenging crossings, and make sure that we learn what those best practices are. So, and I understand that there are concerns about traffic, but I also see the other side. I drive, I drive in Chestnut Street, you know, between 7:30 and 9 o'clock every morning. I get to the light at Charlotte Street. Most of the time, there's six to 10 cars there. There's not a huge backlog of cars. Maybe it's different other parts, but that seems to me like it would be one of the most challenging places, and it's, and at what ought to be the busiest time of the day, it seems fine to me. So, and, you know, and I see other, you know, I see other parts of the city that are worse. Liberty Street has become a great thoroughfare. I love having that. That's my route to work. And there are times of day where I'm backed up almost to Liberty Place, and it's fine because, you know, it's a busy city, it's a vibrant city, you know, people are getting around, and there's going to be times of day where things are congested, and there's, the rest of the day, they're not. You know, most of the day, I could sit on the front porch of my house and count the cars that go by on Chestnut Street, and it's five, 10 cars each minute. But I think, you know, President Reichenbach, your point earlier is a good one, which is, I think, as this moves forward, you know, we ought to, you know, engage in our neighborhoods. You know, I don't think this is the best for, you know, as I've talked to our neighbors, most of us agree that there's features that are attractive, that are desirable, that'll help our city be a better city. I think the best thing is if we can have those conversations in our neighborhoods rather than in a forum like this, because, you know, some of my favorite neighbors fundamentally disagree with me on this, and that's not, that's not, I don't enjoy that. I'd rather we all put our heads together, come with an open mind, talk about what we like about it, and figure out how we can get the best outcome once you hopefully approve this tonight. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Alice Yoder. I'm the Executive Director of Community Health for Penn Medicine Lancaster General Health, and pleased to be in front of you this evening because Lancaster, just to state that Lancaster General strongly supports the Active Transportation Plan. Our mission, as you hopefully know, and don't have memorized like I have memorized, but is to improve the health and well-being of the communities we serve. And many of us, many people think of Lancaster General as being the hospital, the emergency department, and certainly that is a part of health care, but really, more than 70% many times, health happens outside the walls of the hospital. And we clearly recognize that, and we know that health happens where we live, work, learn, and play. And we feel the Active Transportation Plan helps us get to those critical aspects of how to create a healthy community. The Active Transportation Plan clearly identifies policies and projects that will improve walking and biking throughout Lancaster City and the county. This past year, all three hospitals in Lancaster County collectively came together to conduct a community health needs assessment, and three of the main pressing issues that came up in the plan are really related to the Active Transportation Plan. So as we studied and we looked at data as well as public opinion, physical inactivity rose as one of the pressing issues. Obesity still continues to be an issue in the city and the county, and poor air quality also came up as a community need. Many, making walking and bicycling safe and attractive options will increase physical activity and reduce traffic congestion. Many people are unable to drive due to either age, disability, low income, and other barriers. And we feel addressing some of the elements in the Active Transportation Plan will also help those individuals that are unequally affected by something that's beyond their control. Safe transportation alternatives are essential for connecting to education, jobs, as well as full-service grocery stores where people are more likely to get healthy food choices and options. So that's something that people don't normally think about, as well as, of course, getting to medical care. So we really want to thank the city for actually being a lead on many of the projects and policies that are already outlined in the Active Transportation Plan and are excited about the option that you might consider adopting the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor. My name is Gregory Paulson. I live on Nevin Street, across from the Reynolds Middle School. I've lived in the city for 26 years. I've lived in the county for 43 years. I am an avid cyclist. I was an avid cyclist when I came to Lancaster County, and I, even though I'm well over 6,000 years old, I still commit, I still commute to work twice a day from back and forth to my home. I've lived in Lancaster County for 43 years, and I've witnessed a lot of changes. And these are all anecdotal, but they are market changes that have stuck with me. In Lancaster County in general, there are a lot more cyclists, and there are certainly a lot of tourists on bicycles, and there's certainly a lot of people who are concerned about fitness. There is much more acceptance of bicyclists on the county roads than there are in the city roads. There's far less tolerance of drivers by, about cyclists on the city streets. And unfortunately, I'm seeing fewer and fewer children on bicycles on the city streets. I personally, in my commute, have stopped riding on Chestnut Street and Walnut Street, and instead will take a longer route, making sure that I time my coming and going to my office on North Duke Street and North Lime Street because of the speed that commuters are also going in as they drive. It's not unusual for me to, for someone to give me the finger as I'm driving. I'm concerned about the speed. I'm concerned about the double parking. I'm concerned about the greater disregard for cyclists that I see in the city. Double parking is an issue. Parking in the bike lanes that you have approved is an issue. And as I no longer ride on Walnut Street and Chestnut Street, I don't have to deal with the people who drive it like they're slaloming down a ski slope. But I've also witnessed more interest in the school district, in having the students learn about bicycling, and having children pedal to school rather than being driven to school. I see more parents riding with their children in the neighborhoods, not only as recreation, but heading to stores. And I'm seeing more and more stores with parking facilities or bike racks. I have been, and frankly, I think I've been witnessing a change in our culture, and I see more of us focusing on health and the environment. I personally, I support the resolution that we continue studying this matter so that we can, so that we can get the money from the state to continue studying it. I applaud the city's efforts to join with the county and with the surrounding, with the surrounding communities to bring about this cultural change in this greater community. I look forward to more bicycle facilities in the city. I look forward to working with the schools and providing more education for students. And I also look forward to working with the police department as they need to, as they need to enforce the traffic laws and the vehicle code as it applies both to vehicles and to bicycles. This is an issue that's more about my driveway. It's an issue more about my parking space. It's about safety. It's about education. It's about health and environment. I look forward to the changes that I hope will come once you approve the resolution and that we can continue working to make Lancaster a safer, a safer city. And I'm really, really concerned about the safety of our children. So many parents don't let their kids ride because they don't think the streets are safe. That's got to change. And I think that by agreeing to the, passing the resolution, you're helping that change come about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Evening, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Adriana Tencio. I'm at 424 North Pine Street, and I am very excited that we have something as wonderful as the ATP. Because I am a mom, I am a citizen, I am a person that only really started riding a bike about five years ago because I was in a car accident on a bike when I was 11 years old. And it wasn't up until I got the courage as an adult to start riding again, thanks to my buddies at the Commonwealth, that I got on a bike. And biking has changed my life, and I want it to change other people's lives as well. And the only way that we can really do that is by providing safe infrastructure for cyclists, And the only way that we can really do that is by providing safe infrastructure for cyclists, but also for pedestrians. As Alice said, you know, we're facing a lot of health crises here in Lancaster, not only in the city but in the county. And a plan like this helps to address some of them. I want to see kids riding around on their bikes and smiling and happy and not scared. I would love to ride my bike the .7 miles from my house to the place that I work without having people pass me with six inches to spare. Or, you know, getting beeped at because people think I belong on the sidewalk and not on the road. Having bicycle infrastructure gives a place for cyclists to be, but it gives us a place and the knowledge that we belong as well. And I think that's really, really important. So thank you for considering this. I love most of the plan and I really hope that we can come to an agreement with some of the smaller things to make Lancaster a better place for pedestrians and cyclists and not just for drivers. Because honestly, ride a bike here, it will change how you drive and it will change how you walk and it will change how you live your life. Thanks.
Thank you. Evening.
Hello. So I am Emma Humm. I'm a planner with the Lancaster County Planning Commission. Obviously, we work partners with the city and the LIMC on this project. So I'm pleased to report to you that the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, adopted this plan yesterday. So it will be policy that will help to inform the way that we do transportation projects and fund transportation in the county. Throughout the process, we were just extremely excited by the feedback we got from the public. People are really excited about biking and walking and they want to do more of it and they want us to provide safe places for them to do it. And this plan starts to lay out, you know, the route, how we get to that point where people feel safe crossing the street rather than driving there. So we're very excited to move forward with this plan. We're looking forward to continuing our work with the city and with the LIMC and hope you're able to adopt it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening, sir.
Jason O'Malley, long-time city resident, currently live in Lancaster Township right outside of the city, but I travel through the city on a daily basis. I'm all for the bike lanes. I think they're a great idea. I think it's something that the city could use. I just think you might look at all the other alternatives rather than Chestnut Street, like James Street, Lemon Street, places that have a little bit less traffic, a little bit more, less of a thoroughfare through the city, where I think people would actually be able to use that to their benefits rather than maybe cause a lot of traffic jams that people are concerned with. Thanks.
Thank you. Evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Joshua Drews. I live at 823 North Lime. Also speaking on behalf of the Coalition for Smart Growth Tonight as a member. I understand Dr. Bratman's here to speak as well. She's eminently more qualified to speak about the environmental impacts of audio-oriented, auto-oriented traffic. So I will be focusing my comments on the social and economic impacts. Auto-oriented transit has severed communities, hollowed out downtowns, and created division between us. We are physically, more racially segregated now than we were during the civil rights movement. Privileged white wealthy residents from downtowns funded by VA loans that they were able to get through the interstate highway system fled our downtowns and into the suburbs. Auto-oriented transportation hasn't just segregated us racially. Monolithic single zoning has increased divisions among all socioeconomic lines, leaving us a society that is increasingly becoming more divided. Creating safe alternative transit options allows people that may not be able to afford a car to have access to jobs, shopping, and services that they may not be able to access otherwise. Increasing multimodal transportation helps to eliminate some of the physical barriers to work in the way that we face in this county. Additionally, car trips isolate people in cars. Areas with higher walk scores and bike scores have lower incidence of crime, creating safer communities for all participants. I'm not so naive to think that a couple of bike lanes are going to solve racial injustice. But the role of auto-oriented transit in segregating communities cannot be ignored. And even making small steps to end reliance on cars helps everyone. Smaller, compact, more walkable communities create stronger, healthier, more dynamic communities. Active transportation also yields a ton of economic benefits. Patrons that use bikes shop locally. Forty-eight percent of car trips are less than four miles long, which is a reasonable distance to travel by bike. Reducing car trips and total vehicle miles decreases the amount of lost productivity that occurs from being stuck in traffic. Reduced crime costs associated with prosecuting crime increases patronage to local businesses. And more residents will also, as Alice greatly pointed out, lower the consumption of healthcare. According to the commercial real estate firm Cushman Wakefield, walk scores are now more important, or now the largest predictor of business relocation. They studied 500 firms across 170 industries and found that less than 10% of business relocations were to areas that had lower walk scores. Walkability beat out tax incentives as a predictor of relocation decisions. Now, a plan is only as good as its implementation and the specific details can get tricky. In this plan, it seems that the sticky part is the protected bike lanes along Chestnut and eventually Walnut. I encourage the members of council to think about what is important to them. Is it creating great places or traffic? A traffic movement is a central and critical component of maintaining a city. But governing by values and with vision requires setting priorities. And are our priorities as city residents in building great spaces, the places where we want to spend time and build communities that are economically and socially equitable and environmentally sustainable? Or is our priority in moving traffic efficiently? For just a moment, please visualize your favorite places. Could be the beach, maybe the mountains. Maybe it's your family living room or a friend's place in Brooklyn. Now consider all the things that make that space great. Is it the people, maybe the nature, maybe the smell of mom's cooking? Of all the qualities that create great places, was efficient movement of traffic even on your list? The idea is not new to Lancaster, but it's not a new idea anyway. Protected bike lanes are currently in more than 500, or there's currently more than 500 protected bike lanes in 82 cities across 34 states in this country. The specific, the specific design has been used successfully numerous times in numerous places. The speed limit isn't different, but I live on North Lime Street, which is US Route 222. Technically, it should be 25 miles an hour, but I live on a road that is frequently used for people passing through the city. And I can tell you, it's not always enjoyable. The effective traffic rates are much higher and I've gotten into numerous confrontations with people as they try to get through the city. I regularly get honked at when I slow down to see if there is available parking. On two occasions, I've gotten into confrontations with drivers that have gotten so upset, they've gotten out of their cars when I've backed up to get into a parking space. How they got their driver's license without knowing that you parallel park by reversing, I don't know. But the opponents here tonight, I don't think would be in favor of increasing the speed limit or increasing or decreasing parking so that they can widen streets and travel lanes and encourage people to get through town faster. That'd certainly alleviate traffic, but it wouldn't create more enjoyable places. So with that said, I believe that I'm right, but I also could be wrong. And I nerd out a lot about auto-oriented transit, but it doesn't mean that I can predict the future. It is possible that, or I believe that if I am incorrect and this plan does not work and the bike lanes are not producing the changes that we hope to see, that a city as dynamic and resilient as us can repaint some lines, move parking back to the side, and bounce back from a small mistake. So with that said, I believe that the upside to this is great. I think the downside is very limited and I encourage the council to pass the Active Transportation Plan and then have the courage and leadership to see through its implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Eve Bratman. And Josh set me up to perhaps have greater thunder for my remarks than they will actually have. So I'll keep it simple to five main points. I moved here to Lancaster with my partner in 2016, having weighed very carefully the decision to move to Pennsylvania from Washington DC and considered the prospect of instead actually moving to Portland, Maine. What attracted us to Lancaster was its commitment to sustainability and its possibilities for becoming a leading city in terms of climate action, walkability, bikability, and championing what some environmental writers have called the greenest possible America in being a small city. We loved its size, we loved its scale, and we loved the commitment that we saw from all of Lancaster's citizens to investing in this place that we all call home. With the Climate Action Plan coupled with the ATP, we have a momentous opportunity in front of us to achieve really significant and important climate goals for our future and for our children's future. I say this as a mother of a five-month-old as well as a professor of environmental studies. Second, the ATP is fabulous for its interconnectivity throughout the region. So by approving the ATP, we're not only making quality of life better for the local city residents to get from the northwest or the southeast of the city into downtown, but we're also making it possible to do trips out to other destinations. And I love that the plan is oriented to thinking about the trips that people take in their cars that we could otherwise achieve by bike or by walking. I think that will ultimately alleviate a lot of car trips and over time may even lead to people giving up their cars. The research tends to show that current bicycle ridership rates are not necessarily indicators of future bicycle rates. But what does indicate a future of bikability is greater bicycling infrastructure. So to put it simply, if you build it, yes, they will come. They do start riding, especially when those lanes are safe and protected and well-painted and well-signed and have connectivity between point A and point B, C, and D. Third, there's been numerous points raised about safety, safety of bicycling lanes and the concern, especially around the Chestnut Street bike lane, as not being very safe. And the evidence there shows that the more you slow traffic, the more you calm it, the safer our streets will be. I think this ATP, and I've looked in detail at the diagrams in the annex around Chestnut and Walnut Streets in particular, and know that also this study has been planned and conducted by some of the best planning firms in the country. And I trust their findings. Slowing cars down will yield benefits for pedestrians, for children, and for cyclists. My fourth point is just about poverty and access. Mr. Drews has covered most of that. So just to emphasize the point, the cheapest and oftentimes quickest ways of getting around are by your own two feet or by a bicycle, which requires relatively inconsequential maintenance costs compared to that of owning a motor vehicle and maintaining it. The ATP also does a marvelous job of treating streets throughout the city, including this controversial Chestnut Street bike lane. It's not just in northwest Chestnut Street. It actually is a bike lane that goes throughout the city. And I would beg the council to keep in mind that the access issue, the ways in which this ATP really coherently addresses the needs of all the city's residents is one of its most impressive and important features. Finally, returning to the sustainability theme, reductions in auto-based trips, which is ultimately where this plan will lead us, leads us all to be healthier. By being essentially an incentive for us all to hop on a bike or use our own two feet to get around, we're going to have a city in the future where people interact with each other more by seeing each other at slower paces and not through the glass and steel boxes of our car windows, where we are able to be breathing in fresh air and where we are able to be physically active in ways that can only lead to better positive health outcomes for things ranging from asthma to obesity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jerry Brown, what's, it's something I'm sick now. When they had, when they built Marbury Street Two Way and nobody said nothing, they didn't say a word. When they built, when they got Charles Street, yeah, everybody said, nobody said nothing. Now, when they come down to Chestnut Street to a one lane, everybody opened their mouth up. Why? But saying the point about that, everybody knows you gotta have money to build anything and for the bicycle, it's good for the bicycle here in Lancaster. Because last week, a person almost got killed, a person from New Jersey come down the street, hit it one way, hit the cab rip, right, right on. And they had to cut both the people out. I'm glad they were, they were injured bad, right? But see, people from our state don't know the right lanes down line, but when they got bicycle lanes, it's good for people to have because we never had bicycle lanes. And what they're talking about down line, this transportation should go through. And now, once you got bicycle lanes, it teaches people a lot about the bicycle lanes. And it's just the people who drive the cars. When I see people driving fast, they drive fast. They drive the way they want to drive. And they don't say nothing until they get a ticket. When, once they get a ticket, they still drive fast. So all this talk that they're talking about is not going to do nothing, but everybody will still be the same. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think with that, I'm going to close the public comment on this issue. I want to thank everybody for their thoughts. Again, this is the beginning of a very long process where we're going to have conversations. We're going to meet together in groups. We're going to talk about this in your neighborhoods and you're going to have every opportunity to comment on these things, that I assure you of. So I really, really appreciate you taking the time to come out and giving us that food for thought as we begin this process going forward, if it's council's purview to choose to pass this. With that, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne. I think that whether you're a lifelong resident or you're new to the city, there's so much to discover when you slow down and walk or bike. So I'm in favor of the resolution. Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
In reference to traffic, if you haven't been in New York City, it doesn't matter if you're going to drive fast, whether it's going one way or another. So I'm just going to vote aye for right now.
Mr. Gepara.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Weidel.
Sorry, I'm good. Sorry, I've been, I've been riding a bike for about a month of my earthly life now. And have managed to almost hurt myself in both Lancaster City and Houston. So I'm going to go ahead and vote aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
President Reichenbach. Aye. Thank you all for your comments. Moving on to Council Resolution Number 19, 2019.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, recognizing April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in the City of Lancaster and calling on all people to adopt attitudes that promote healthy relationships, equality, and respect.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes, Mr. President. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I would like to present this to Suzy Gorm as a resolution to adapt and leading fight against sexual assault across the, basically across the country. And also wanted to make a statement that Senator Becca Rouse and Senator Katie Muth introduced bills that would transform sexual assault investigation in Massachusetts and Pennsylvania State Houses. All five newly elected to the US House of Representatives just voted to reauthorize the Violence Against Women's Act. So basically, what I'm saying is we need to continue educating young ladies and women to completely open up and let people know if you're being harassed at work or anywhere else to be a voice and go and... introduced bills that would transform sexual assault investigation in Massachusetts and Pennsylvania State Houses. All five newly elected to the US House of Representatives just voted to reauthorize the Violence Against Women's Act. So basically, what I'm saying is, we need to continue educating young ladies and women to completely open up and let people know if you're being harassed at work or anywhere else to, to be a voice and go and report it, not to hide it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council comments?
I have two daughters, who are pretty young, and I have young nieces and nephews. And much as I'm sure all of you feel, like there's such a light when you look at the members of your family, especially the young ones. And so with the type of atrocities we're talking about, like those types of things devastate not just the victim, but the, the lives of the families as well. It's sad that we live in a world where we even have to have something like this, but it's a necessary evil. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Other council comments? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Gepara.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeau.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
President Reichenbach.
Aye. And I believe Councilwoman Diaz would like to present the resolution.
Yes, Suzy Gomez is here.
If you want to come up front, ma'am. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Diaz for presenting this resolution and working to get it put together for this evening's meeting.
That's all I have.
Thank you. We will move on to our second public comment period. This is open for comment about issues or concerns that were not on tonight's agenda. I'd ask that you limit the duration of your comments to three minutes. Does anyone have any comments about items that were not on tonight's agenda? Yes, I do have an answer for you. If you want to wait till after the meeting, I have a date and time when it was approved for council. No problem. Sure. You share your name and your street, please, sir?
My name is Terry Brown, 230th Street, West Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
Now, I've been coming here for more than 30 years. Every time I come up to this mic, I'm telling you the truth. I don't sit there and tell you no lies, no fake, no story, nothing like that. I'm telling you the straight, real deal, that what goes down the line, the truth. Everybody, maybe half the people here, they come up here to get some answer, but see, when I come up here, I don't believe you telling a lie. I lie or hurt you. And there's a lot of things down the line, like when the mayor, every time I try to go to the mayor for something, see, I always get a different answer. When I get a different answer, that means that in my mind, she don't want to do it. So I say, as long as she don't do it, then she's hurting the city, that's all. Just like, I'm going to say to Sarah, like I told Rick Gray, Mary Gray, and Charlie Snisco, do you know when you walk out that door, that they, did a bullet might have hit following you?
I'm not really, I'm not really finding that appropriate at all.
No, 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 it's not, it's something, it's a straight comment, it's a straight comment down the line.
Respectfully, I'm asking you, let's not go down that road, Mr. Brown. Fair enough. Let's just not talk about violence.
Yeah. But that's what I'm done with. I talked to him about it. It's something different. That's why.
What I'm asking.
Okay, okay, that's why I went to have, okay, I wrote them signs up. Know them signs they got on the poles? I did that there, and I had, I had my former council, city councilman, Louis Mendoza, and had somebody from Philadelphia approve it. That's also saying, but the point about that thing, I'm just saying, every time I come up here, I'm telling you the truth. But see, most time I come up here, oh, you think I'm lying, I'm lying, I'm lying. Because one thing, point about that, all my years, I've come here, you always got yes, yes, yes. That's why, that's why you lucky you see Afro-American people come here because you're saying yes, yes, yes all the time. If they want something down line, right, then you're going to say no, but why? That's what people are thinking, why, why, why? But see, down line, I'm just telling you, when I come up here, I'm telling you the truth, and hey, no ifs, or buts about it, 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate it. And again, going forward, if we could stay away from the violent comments, I'd appreciate that very much. Any other public comment? We'll go to the reporter and mayor.
Thank you. Tonight's report is all about meters. We'll start with gas meters. Lancaster has a long-established historic district, and there are limitations on what you can do in historic districts unless you are a utility. Following the recent PUC regulation that requires gas companies to relocate gas meters from the interior of a structure to the exterior, there are now bulky meters and regulators popping up in front of houses across the city with little consideration to the historic character of our community. In the coming days, Lancaster, along with the boroughs of Columbia and Carlisle, will be filing a declaratory judgment action with the Commonwealth Court and against the PUC, challenging the PUC regulation, which we understand to be in violation of our historic districts. The complaint seeks to have the PUC regulation declared invalid and to require the PUC to respect our historic districts and our ordinances related to historic districts and future regulations. I'll continue to keep you apprised. As an initial matter, the PUC will have 30 days from the service of the complaint to respond. This has been something that we've been working on for a very long time, and I'm very appreciative that we've been able to get it to this, to this juncture. Second, water meters. You may have seen the March 30th article in the LNP outlining the considerable efforts that the city is putting into contacting our water customers regarding replacement or retrofitting of existing water meters. Thank you, Tim Stuhl dryer. At that time, it was reported that 60% of our customers that had received notices, nearly 4,000 had not yet responded. This is just entirely too many people. So Matt Metzler, our deputy director, decided to pilot a different strategy with 123 people who had not responded to the five other attempts via mail or door hangers. That strategy included an additional bright yellow notice taped to their door, as well as some of the prep work of marking water mains and the PA1 call in advance of a shut-off. It worked. Out of 123 customers facing shut-offs, there are now less than a dozen. This took additional effort, teamwork across departments, but we divided and conquered the list of 123 individuals of this pilot. We've saved a lot of money not sending out certified letters to all these addresses, and we're going to continue. So I just wanted to keep council apprised because that was a really big number. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your report, and thank you for your work on those issues. Report of Council President. I just want to answer a question that was asked earlier. Council Resolution 67 of 2017, which was passed on December 12, 2017, officially changed the name of Farnham Park to Colliton Park, in case anybody was waiting on edge of their seat to know that answer this evening. That was officially done by council. That's all I have from my report. Go to council comments. Hearing none, can I have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all for taking the time to come out this evening. It's appreciated.